All right, we ready, everybody? Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 2024 meeting of the St. Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. We have a full house, which is great. Good to see everybody. We have some big items on the agenda. Let's do introductions. My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president of the board.
John Johnston, Vice President.
Judith Gwen.
Dorothy Waters.
Sharon Fitzsimmons.
John Walters.
The Setloc Treasure.
Thank you, everybody. So we do have a quorum. Next item up is approval of the agenda as written. We can entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Any discussion of the agenda? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries. Next up is approval of the May 2024 minutes. We can entertain a motion to approve the May 2024 minutes.
There is a correction needs to be made. Somehow I got married to Dorothy, or she got married to me. It's either Jay Walters or Dee Waters. They're in three C.
I see that. Yeah, so item three C, the mysterious Dee Walters. Do we? Do we recall?
Could be Jay Walters, or it could be Dee Waters.
Yes.
But which one? We'll watch and we'll watch the video and correct it.
Okay, thank you. And we'll be waiting with bated breath to find out. Okay. All right, so John, would you like to make a motion to amend?
Yeah, move to approve as amended.
Second.
Okay, thanks, Judith. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion passes. Okay, moving on, we have the monthly expense ledger, the EALs. We can entertain a motion to approve these. Folks want to dive in to quiz mode.
I just had a question about the on the fourth page of Communico. Is that for the electronic signage?
Communico is our meeting and events booking system. So it's where our patrons or customers book meeting rooms and study rooms and anything else and where our program in the programs and events happen. And it's shared with Smurla and Ocho.
Probably October. I know we haven't gotten any dates or locations yet.
What conference is that? I'm sorry.
Maryland Libraries.
It's the statewide friends and trustees group.
Yes. And we approve the budget for FY 2025 with fully funding overdrive for all three counties. And let me look at the, and we just met about three days ago, and we had we'd like to interview community members to show community members to the board before the August meeting, and I think there's a push to recruit from the community, you know, work through different organizations to do that. We'd like to solicit more names. So we said we set some, we looked at board goals, and we consider those again in August, including recruitment, strategic planning, the conference we mentioned.
Share responsibilities of budget processes. And also outline
listal kind of training that we'd like to have for the board members for Smurla.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much.
I have a few additions about the budget, if I may. Smurla is putting out $225 for membership in the association in rural and small libraries. That's going to allow one of our staff to be a member of that organization and to attend a conference that they have, an annual conference that they have. They are giving $25,000 to each of the counties for mobile hotspot funding. And we're going to use that to upgrade our mobile hotspots and add more, and I'll talk more about that in a second. $3,000 for each county to send a participant to the Maryland Library Leadership Institute. So somebody who we're looking at becoming a future, say, branch manager will have a conference training. $27,325 per county. That's a 28% increase to help fund Hoopla. That will not fund Hoopla for us fully, but it's nice to have. More on that later. $5,000 per county to hire presenters for programming. They gave $10,000 to St. Mary's County only to help make the Charlotte Hall Library Customer Service Desk ADA compliant currently is not. We'll have to work with the county on that. As John mentioned, overdrive funding for $173,250 that will add content to that service. And $10,000 in marketing so that we can, for example, give away summer, more summer reading T-shirts or other marketing giveaway items. So that's about 3,000 for us, call it. Those items won't appear in our budget. They're part of Smurla's budget. We'll ask when we do something to get you know, sort of recompensation for it. But that's, those are some additional items, and we're very, very grateful for that support, which comes basically from state funding.
Thank you, Michael.
Michael, does that overdrive additional budget for overdrive, is it earmarked for particular things? Or is it just in general, we can add to the overdrive?
They'll decide what to add to the collection and Smurla will sort of, it's a tri-county thing.
Like, would you like to continue with the celebrations?
Yes, just a couple of quick notes. At 10 o'clock, we will have a visit from Debbie from Library IQ to tell us about the the strategic plan. We'll get into celebrations. I've got quite a few this morning, and one person is actually here. So I'll start with, yes. Oh, okay, great. I'll start with Shelby Miller. Shelby has been with the library for five years now. Oh, yeah, and there you are too. Anything you want to say?
Um, well, I started as a summer intern in 2019, just as
for the recording.
All right, I started as the summer intern in 2019. I came back into town from college, and I just wanted something to do for the summer, and I haven't left. So if that says anything about our organization, I think it's just that I've really had a fabulous experience, and I've grown with our library family and yeah, I don't have many plans to leave either. It's, I feel very grateful for the experiences I've had so far. So, thank you.
And Shelby has recently started helping me put bills to save me some time. So that's helpful.
Thank you, Shelby. Only 25 years to go, Shelby. Mary Beth, welcome, welcome. Mary Beth has been with us now for 15 years.
Just that it's been a pleasure to serve the community for the last 15 years, and I look forward to continuing for some more years.
And Mary Beth is my Lexi contact for all of my finance stuff.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Congratulations and thanks to both. We have a hip hip hooray for the entire Lexington Park Library staff. We did meet at Lexington Park last time, and a number of you had a chance to see the improvement in the shelving, which really opens up the building, creates greater visibility for staff to see what's going on. We have not lost the collection. We've simply been able to consolidate it in a different space. So really looks great, and thank you for our friends at the library whose money is what funded that. So they all threw themselves really into the effort and made it happen very quickly. So congratulations to Lexington Park staff. I have hip hip parades for three members, I'm sorry, four members of our IT team. Timothy Beers, Jeff Powers, Jonathan Ford, and Robert Palmer, who's the IT coordinator. And it reads, "Thank you for your hard work completing several projects, including new cameras, updating the light at the Lexington Park Library Computer Lab and adding a TV and Switch gaming system, and updating the arms to be movable for the cell checkouts. Thank you for setting up the lobby to serve customers during the shelving update. We thank you for your outstanding service." We have several that are related to the story walks, the new story walks, and if you, when this meeting is over, walk out front, you'll see one of those out there. Anna Williams and Reenie Anagoyen, thank you for creating and helping to install the beautiful imaginative educational and downright fun story walk at Leonard Town Library. Thank you for helping us make our front yard even more appealing. And to Emma Rollinson, thank you for taking lead on completing the task of the story walk by ensuring that the story chosen was double laminated and placed in acrylic units along the Charlotte Hall Trail. The story "Hop, Hop, Jump" will keep young trail walkers active and will show them much fun moving around can be. We thank you for your outstanding. We also have to thank, as we previously have, Leonard Town Rotary and Rotary District for the $10,000 grant, and Smecko for all their work with the really heavy lift of installing the posts. John, I've since had to go up to Charlotte Hall and put concrete in some, so that was a tough task. For Brian Youngs, oh, this one for story walk as well. Brian, thank you for your help. And one last one for Corey Somerville, our security coordinator. Thank you for researching, acquiring, setting up Simply Safe at all three St. Mary's County Library locations and the mobile library. We thank you for your outstanding service. Simply Safe is the alarm system. So currently, we have the ability, if something is troubling in the building, to press a silent alarm, and it will notify security, and they will know to come visit. We know the systems work because we accidentally tripped them twice. We've trained staff on where those buttons are located and how to use them. It's fairly complicated. There's codes to put in, that kind of thing, but we will be getting there. So that part is done. So thank you very much for Corey for getting that in place.
And just an FYI, we tripped them during the testing period.
What, what branches is that again, Michael?
All three.
All three.
All three, and the mobile library too.
And the mobile library.
Yes. And you said security will come private farm?
No, emergency services will get notified, and they'll probably be sending law enforcement. Okay, so moving right along.
Michael, you forgot the LATI graduation.
Oh, so I have. Thank you so very much. We've got there's no hip hip for him. Okay, great. More celebrations. Sorry, thank you. The Library Assistant Training Institute helps people who have not been to library school learn the traditions of librarianship and how most effectively you give customer service. So we have two early start graduates. That's Helen Kristoff and Shelby Miller. Shelby, congratulations again. And then there's kind of a full lot, and that's Denise Valera. So that's just increasing the capacity of our staff, and that's offered by the state. It does take quite a bit of time to get through that, and it's sort of a study program. So we're very grateful for the state for moving with that. Thank you for the reminder about that, Mary Ann. I've provided in your packet the Maryland State Library Agency statewide futures blueprint, and this was compiled by the state library. And you'll see on the last page, quite a few people, including me, did work on this, and it's setting up several. It is setting, it sets out several sort of things that are happening that we're expecting in the future that libraries need to be paying attention to, and I'm not going to sort of move through it with you because we've got quite a bit on the agenda today. Just something for you to take a look at, and perhaps we can discuss it next time if you are interested in doing so.
Can I ask, was, was this blueprint considered in the strategic planning process for our library?
No, this was done by the state, and I would say that as we looked at our strategic planning process, we were keeping these kinds of things in mind.
Yeah.
But it's not an official part of our strategic plan.
Do you, do you think, should there be some intertwining, or should there be dialogue between these two sets of plans? I know we're kind of introducing, this is new, we're introducing our strategic plan at the same time. What, is there an appropriate place to kind of look to this as a guiding document in any way?
I would say that these are things that we sort of need to be looking at, and there is already a substantial amount of intertwining. For example, our strategic plan has pays attention to artificial intelligence.
Right.
Some of this is kind of beyond our scope. For example, develop pathways for individuals without a master's degree in library information science with a graduate degree in the field to work in a professional librarian capacity. That's not really something at our level we can do. That would require, in some cases, looking at state code. So there is substantial overlap, I'd say, in the concerns about many of these things. Some of it would, I would say is probably be outside the scope of ours, but for example, we have information about sustainability of operations, and one of this is public and civic space, which says acknowledge and act on environmental and climate change. I'd say there's already substantial overlap. Thank you.
Michael, there wasn't a copy in my package, so maybe after the meeting I could get one.
It looks like you didn't see one.
No.
Huh.
Didn't get one either.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was in there. We'll make sure to get one for everybody.
On Google Docs as well.
So maybe for next month, we can note where those overlaps are, and it could help to weight the, the suggestions in the strategic plan.
Yeah, that's good idea. Just a couple of other quick notes before I get into some other things. The hotspots, we're going to add 80 new 5G T-Mobile hotspots. And the current hotspots we have are going to get sort of relocated, and most of the new ones will go to Lexington Park, which has by far the highest demand.
Is that 5G for the, the signal that goes to the device?
That's for what the device itself is able to bring, how quickly it's able to bring data in.
Oh, so, so 5G applies to the connection.
Hotspot itself.
Okay, so to the connection to the
And, and then presumably, just about any Bluetooth device connected to it will have a speedier service than, than with the sort of prior ones. We are launching our memory labs at the two locations that did not yet have them, which is Lexington Park and Charlotte Hall. That allows members of the public to come in and convert older media to digital media. So slides can become photo, digital photographs, a reel-to-reel tape can become a audio file. A reel-to-reel movie can become a digital movie, and so those are launching on June 15. On August 24 is an event called Come to the Library sponsored by an outfit called Brave Books. I have talked to you about them before. They are a conservative Christian publisher, and they are asking people to code, to reserve space in libraries and read their books, and we have had our meeting rooms reserved for that. That's happened before. There was a minor controversy. Some people said that they're anti-library in their views and wish to censor other books, and we reply that all are welcome to use our meeting rooms. So they will be in our meeting rooms on that day. I'm not expecting any, any trouble over that.
What was the date?
August 24. That's a Saturday. We received a request from somebody who called, I'm going to say himself, because it was certainly likely to be a him, a request, whether it's legal to come film in the library or not. And we shared our policies, which basically says that the library is a limited public space, that they may film staff, but they may not film other people without those people's permission per Maryland law, which prevents the sort of discovery of people's identity in their use of the library. It's likely a First Amendment auditor, someone's going to come in the library and take video and insist they've got the right to be there by the First Amendment. And we will explain if that happens. It's happened on the Maryland libraries. We haven't seen one yet that, you know, it's fine to film our staff. We'll happily, would you like to hear about our summer reading program? And engage in a lot of library things, but somebody can, anybody could come in and film like the architecture. Oh, what a beautiful library this is. May I take pictures? Sure, go ahead. Don't take pictures of people. Just a privacy concern. It is a safety concern. A First Amendment auditor went into an Ana Runda library, started filming people, and one of the people took exception to it. Let's just say the First Amendment auditor didn't end up very happy that day. So we will enforce our policies surrounding this if that were to happen. And again, I'm not really expecting it, but it's been happening in some other Maryland libraries.
But does filming include audio? My understanding was, my understanding with Maryland law, you can take pictures and film of anybody, but you can't record voices. Is that appliance tape?
Take pictures of anybody. That's a public space. Inside, it's called a limited public space. Libraries legally are that way. It's like being in a courtroom. Actually, we can, we can control some of that inside. It's especially the case with children in the library. If somebody comes in and starts filming children, let's just say their, their parents and guardians might not be happy about that. So we are, we're just trying to set up policies that allow people to do what they can do while protecting the privacy and safety of everybody.
Right, but Judith specifically talked about audio. Is there a difference in recording audio?
You, you can come in and with our staff, you can record what they say.
Okay.
Yeah.
When, what if your staff personally have concerns? Are, do you have direction to them? Are they allowed to leave the desk and go to a private space?
With them and given them strategies for coping with it. They may call a manager out, but if they're the only ones there, they may not leave the floor. That's, you know, we don't leave the desks unattended. We suspect that what will happen in most cases is that they'll simply summon a manager to come out, and the manager can stand right there with the First Amendment auditor. Really, we're trying to make this a boring occasion, completely dull. You know, hi, how's it going today? Because what they're really looking for in most cases is a hostile reaction. They want to make trouble. They want to say, look, my First Amendment rights are being trampled on. They posted on social media. They're trying to get clicks and likes and even monetize it. So we've given staff, just make it as dull as you can. Don't react. Just go with the flow. Keep doing your work. They may not film other customers interacting with you. So we, I don't, I don't know that it will happen. If it does, we're ready for it. Is they're not here yet? Okay, no worries. I'll keep going then. Let me do the security update because I can do that faster than I think we can do the budget review. We have installed the alarms. So we have a quote for Lexington Park for the button that will automatically close the other door that's not already hooked up. We don't have a quote yet for Leonard Town. We're working to get that. Those will be the quote for Lexington Park's about $2,500. I'm expecting Leonard Town to be substantially more because there'd be more doors involved. That will be something we've got to work with through the county. We can't do that ourselves, unlike the security system. So we're working on that. And that's kind of the first two of the priorities that we identified that you asked us to be working on in terms of security. So we are moving forward on those and have done some progress. I can quickly do also an RFP update for you. We have two RFPs in the Maryland Emma system right now. One is for the HR slash finance system, and the other is for upgrades in the audio visual systems in Lexington Park and Charlotte Hall, for which the county gave us additional funding for this upcoming year. Both those RFPs are scheduled to close on August 1. And we will be looking at the results we have. So far, we have one firm has replied to one of the RFPs. Next Monday, we have open house at Charlotte Hall and Lexington Park, meeting room and long follow room for vendors to come visit and look at those spaces to prepare their RFPs.
Can I ask, do we have any grant applications in the pipeline that you and your team are working on?
Yes, we do. AM, would you like to talk about, you don't have a microphone?
Sorry, Michael, I missed your question.
Any grant applications in the pipeline that we're working on?
Absolutely. Let me just pull up my list. Since we've been working, I have a bunch of them. We just heard yesterday that our applications with St. Mary's County Arts Council have been all approved, so we're really excited about that. We have other, let me just pull it up, grant submitted here. The council wants where to the Imperial Equipment and arts activities in the library, so public. One particular was for our summer reading before. So really excited to have their support. Once again, the council is really, really wonderful to us. There's a grant for literacy board ads, like for a grant to children, being able to buy them their trips, and it really grabbed a place for literally to begin and play that foundation in a way that is lovely to support that. Let's see. So we also had submitted three grants to the state Library Association. Make for Makerspace Equipment, for a modular study room for Charlotte Hall, which would be really used for supporting our customers who are able to come in, have job support, have tech support in a more private environment, as well as being able to do more tele, applying for jobs and interviews and so forth. Let's think. I just submitted a One Maryland One Book Program grant last night. So that would be for being able to create and hold a One Maryland One Book adjacent program. So this particular program is to provide emergency kits because the One Maryland One Book is really about some disasters and some emergencies and how this would be an adjacent program that helps people connect from the book to something in their own lives. Let's think. I've heard from a couple Let's think. I've heard from a couple that we didn't get funding on because of a foundation priority on a different area. They said they do Maryland, but they really, really want to do Baltimore, those, those types of things. So I'm trying to weed through those. Spent the day yesterday doing more grant prospecting up at Anarundale County. Can I answer any other questions for you?
You got the mic?
We have a fourth grant in as well. That's to, from the state to fund our palace app. And we and one other library which have made it a default public app are going to get that money. They've already said they're going to fund it. And that's about $4,000. So I am yesterday submitted my evaluations of 10 capital grants. I'm on again, this is like the fifth time, seven, $7.5 million a year is given away to Maryland libraries on a competitive basis for new construction. We got 1.6 million for this library. There were 10 applicants with $14 million worth. So some people are going to get disappointed, but I think this is important because we will be applying for that. And it keeps me very much plugged into what's succeeding, what's not, what are priorities, how to write a good grant application. So we will be working on that for fiscal year 28. And I think we're ready to go.
So this is Debbie. Hi Debbie.
Good morning. Hi. There we go.
How are you? How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. Thank you so much for being with us today. We're really excited to talk through the strategic plan.
I am really excited to be here. I'm so excited about this plan. I'm so excited for St. Mary's library. So thank you for letting me join you.
So would you like to just take it away and kind of walk us through the overview documents?
Yes, please. So again, I think we, I, I think most of us, if not all of us have met, my name's Debbie Joy. I work with Library Q. We had a really positive and productive experience with St. Mary's with Michael and all his staff. So I just wanted to take a second to thank everybody. Just a ton of hospitality, a ton of collegiality. It took a fair bit of work on the part of the library staff to really support us through this process. So I just wanted to thank everyone. Would it be okay? Shall we go ahead and jump into the plan? I have several kind of supporting documents and I have some supporting data open. So what, one way that could work really well is for us to walk through the plan. But if you all would please just stop and interrupt and say, hey, I have a question or I have a comment. Then we can address any questions or comments that you have in real time. Would that be okay?
That sounds good. Thank you.
All right. When I'm sharing my screen, I can't always see everybody's face. So please just verbally say, hey, slow down lady, wait a second. And we'll make sure that we get all of your questions answered. So I, I'm always careful about that on Zoom because I can't always see everyone's face.
Especially when the camera in our room feels like it's miles away from us at the table.
Yeah, I for sure can't see your faces now, but it looks like a beautiful day. I heard it's going to be super hot in the area today.
It's another beautiful Southern Maryland summer. No complaints here.
I, I think I might've mentioned that I'm a Baltimorean. Now moved to Charleston. So Charleston's a beautiful food city. But when I go out to dinner in Charleston and there's crab on the menu, I'm like, no.
I have family in Mount Pleasant. It's beautiful down there.
Oh, you do? I'm on Daniel Island, so not very far.
Oh, cool.
Okay. So I have to, I think you get fined if you don't say, can you see my screen?
Yeah, we're good.
All right. So let's go kind of like this. So we're going to walk through the plan. I think that's the best way to do it. And we'll stop from time to time to talk about the data and talk about what led us to this plan. We did kind of want to incorporate the nautical theme in the history of the county. It's so rich and it's so important. And of course, the decor at Leonard Town kind of informed the design of the plan. Table of contents. And so we come in with an introduction and we used to really sort of blather on a little bit in our plans and we find that people have very short attention spans these days. So we've adjusted our plans. So we do a very little bit of exposition and then we really get right into the heart of the plan. But we will today just take a couple of minutes to talk about how we got to where we are. This is, you don't need me to tell you, this is a pivotal moment for public libraries for sure. And so that makes, in a world where public libraries, I always say are all things to all people all of the time, that makes strategic planning even more important. So in a community like St. Mary's where we have, you know, it's a pretty diverse community. And we have lots of different needs for library services. We want to make sure that we have a strong plan and we want to make sure. I almost would say more importantly, but certainly equally importantly, we want to make sure that we have a plan that positions us to be a strong resource in a really fast changing environment. So that's what we talk about in the introduction. I think you all are pretty familiar with our process, but to go through it, we wanted to figure out how can this library system be the most impactful for the community moving forward? What's the community going to look like? You know, it's really great to envision a fantastic library. If it's not aligned with community needs, it's not going to be a fantastic library. That alignment with the community is crucial. So we needed to take a strong look at the county, where it is and where it's going. Okay, great. We understand that. So how can we map what's possible in public libraries, which is, which is huge and a whole bunch of services? But how can we map that specifically to needs in St. Mary's County? And that's what we tried to do. So how can the library evolve to meet those identified needs? And then even more specifically, what strategic goals should the library pursue to meet those needs effectively? And that's where we get down into the real nitty gritty of the plan. So I'll pause there and just ask, just, I know you all have had an opportunity to take a look at the plan. Does anyone have any broad, broad brush comments or questions?
I, I think that the plan to my eye looks very strong. I really appreciate the priorities and the planning themes. I think my biggest concern was just the sheer number of strategies for each priority. And then the number of objectives within those strategies. And I appreciate that we're talking about multiple fiscal years and different timelines. But to me, I see challenges in implementation and prioritization of all of those different strategies and objectives.
Mm hmm. That's a really great point. And we, you know, we had these conversations with Michael and his team. And I think the best way to, to respond that to that is to say, we can take stuff out. We absolutely can, and we're glad to do that. We did not make this a we did not make this a plan that's like, oh, great. Yeah, we'll do it. And we're going to stick it in a drawer. You know, it's, it's a fairly rigorous plan. Some of the items are, are pretty specific and can be accomplished pretty easily. But as we walk through, and this is for the whole board, if, and Michael too, especially. If you all see an item where you say, you know what, I'm not sure that's realistic within this planning timeframe. Let's pause on that and figure out if we want to keep it. Something else I wanted to say related to. Sorry, it escapes me, but.
I, I actually like having this as an aspirational plan. I don't want to lose sight of anything. That's not to say we're going to achieve all of this in a three or five year span. And in three years, when it's time to do another one, we, we may find that something that seemed a priority now and was not accomplished is not simply something that we want to focus on. But I don't mind having all of us here, but Michael, yes, we are going to have to prioritize what are going to be early efforts. There, there are years where some things are set to be accomplished. So I think that's going to help us with the prioritization process. Other things may take some time.
Yeah. That's a very fair point. Any other kind of general comments or questions from the board before we move on?
I want to say that the vision statement is great. It's short and sweet and it's what the library does. I love it.
Thank you.
I wrote that five years ago.
I was going to say, I wish we could take credit for it, but it was, it was already existing. Michael's a great writer.
And I think, I think this is a vast improvement over the last one, that the, the goals seem very measurable. They're specific, they're attainable. I do have concern to get it up the volume, but that may weed itself out over time, but the language is clear. The, the goals are clear here, what we're trying to do. And I appreciate the writing and effort trying to present a very readable document and, and a measurable document.
As far as the volume goes, I wonder, I think we don't take anything out of this document. It is data that has been collected and is valuable for it's the, the fact that it exists. But I wonder what the prior, what the process would be for prioritization and how much the board would be involved with that.
Any other?
Would you like me to comment on that?
Yeah, please do.
For the board members to comment on that. Obviously, I, I think prioritization has to begin in the library itself. And we need to work with all of our teams on this. Now, we did have a group of 15 who reviewed this and we actually did take out some things. We said we act, nah, doesn't look like something we could do. So I will want, we're going to, of, of course, be making this document public to the staff once you've approved it, which may not happen today. And then we're going to having sessions where we go talk with each library in person and say, here's what this is. I think everybody needs to be aware of it, but then we have lots of teams who do actions in the library, as well as individuals who, who, you know, especially in administration do things. And we'll have to work as a team to think about what's, what's first. But then we will be bringing it to you as sort of what our priorities are.
May I comment? Also, some of the things in here are dependent on funding and staffing and they're going to be eliminated just because of that. So, but it's good to have them in there. So.
So in follow-up, that should, should, sorry.
I'm sorry, Debbie. Can Judith go ahead here?
Certainly. So follow-up to Sharon's comment, should we as a board then ask for an annual update on, on the plan where we are maybe every June? So if you find you have to, you know, we just didn't do this one. We're not going to do this one. It dropped off. I mean, you think once a year would be sufficient?
I, what I've seen at, at my institution of work with strategic plans are beautiful spreadsheets where it lists all the strategies and objectives, and it just has markings of in progress, not started, behind schedule, completed, whatever the case may be. I would appreciate, you know, regular status updates on the implementation of the plan, maybe on a quarterly basis. I, I think more than annually might be helpful, but I do think that the actual implementation will require some kind of broad overview of how things are going. And we should definitely be aware of that.
Yeah.
Is my thought.
And I concur, but I think before, before that happens, we need to scrub this to see what things we just don't want to do. So they're not cluttering up the evaluation process.
And I think that's what Michael said is that he's going to talk with the libraries and talk about what's actionable, what's achievable, what are people invested in doing and bring that back to us as the next step.
Yeah.
So we're not voting to finalize it today?
You can.
Is it finalizing it as a document? Cause I don't think we want to take anything out of this document. It is historical data that was gathered by the process. And whether or not these particular things become the library's goals would be an addendum or an additional document to it.
So you're, you're kind of saying we adopt, we accept the document.
Right.
That we are not approving going forward with what it contains.
Right.
I, I have that as an action step for you later. If we could let Debbie finish going through the plan. And you, then we can, at that point, talk about what you want to do with the plan. Library IQ's work is finished today. But you do not have to approve it today and you may take further steps, but if Debbie could, could sort of go through the plan.
That sounds good. Back to you, Debbie.
Thank you. Just to address, it's so great to hear the board have really thoughtful conversation around the plan. So I, I just want to share some experiences that we've had in other communities that are similar to St. Mary's. So first of all, we do, you know, this plan looks very locked down. And in some ways, the language suggests that, and we do work very hard to make sure it's clear, measurable and so forth. But the plan is also flexible. What we have seen happen in other communities is putting an item, especially those aspirational items, writing it down and putting it in a strategic plan makes it real. So even if we can accomplish it, say in a three-year window or a five-year window, we have put it in a plan and we've said as an organization, this is something that's important to us and we're going to try to accomplish it. Especially when it comes to capital projects, especially when it comes to bigger projects like that. So in many cases, we will put an item in a plan and sometimes we'll use words like investigator, research, because we know that that's going to be necessary. And so we want to start that process. And unless and until it's in a plan, it, it's hard to sort of make it real. And then you all also mentioned spreadsheets and Gantt charts. We could not love those more. And those are often in libraries, that becomes annual planning. So it's very typical for a library director to update the board, whether it's annually, quarterly, you know, whatever is good for you. It's very typical for the director to say, you know, for this goal area, here's what we've achieved and for that goal area. And, and to have it in a spreadsheet, that's where it becomes more of an annual planning exercise. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So the plan is flexible. Totally hear that feedback loud and clear about, you know, is this attainable? I think Michael sort of feels like it is, but of course you guys can have that conversation. And then the only other thing I would say is many of these objectives are kind of things we purposely put in what we call low hanging fruit. So we can get some success early on and get our feet under us with the plan. So some of these things are, are pretty low hanging fruit. So that was our process. Through our research, we identified nine challenges and these are very broad and they're all addressed through the plan. So I can, you know, we can slow down a little bit and I think we should and talk about some of the, of the data that informs those challenges. So, you know, when you look at the library budget, Maryland is very fortunate. It's compared with some other states, we get pretty decent library funding. In St. Mary's County, our budget per capita, certainly, you know, a couple of years ago was less than state and national averages. Our collection budget per capita was less than state and national averages. And so there were some areas, especially when it came to the collection and the performance of the collection, where we feel like that's an area that we could address strategically. Sorry, go ahead.
No, please continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Some of the things we also noticed, we definitely heard about the disparity in the county. You know, we have a pretty, a fairly diverse population, although we have a very well educated and, you know, pretty good income in the population with some pockets of lower income areas. And so you can see that in the library facilities, you know, Leonard Town is so awesome and gorgeous. Charlotte Hall, Lexington Park, a little bit less so. And interestingly, we see that in the performance of the collection. So if you look at Lexington Park, you know, we're pretty full there. There's not a lot of space, but had we more space, we could probably circulate more physical materials. Whereas Charlotte Hall and Lexington Park, a little bit less so. So the idea of, and we'll get to this a little later, but the idea of in physical space, if you build it, if you make it nice, they will come. That holds to be true. There's one tiny caveat that I want to make sure and emphasize with collection is it's not just having a bigger collection. It's not just having more stuff, but it's having more of the right stuff. And so the library, for the most part, has got the right stuff and now using data analysis has even more of the right stuff. Just one more quick comment on collection. We do see an opportunity in St. Mary's County for electronic materials. So if we had a bigger electronic collection, if we perhaps allocated some more resources to that, could we see circulation increase? We believe the answer to that is. We believe the answer to that is yes. And what we're seeing little bit in St. Mary's, but very much so in similar communities is there are many people in the community who are active library users who never set foot in any library building. They're downloading stuff, they're doing research, they're listening to audiobooks, but they're not walking in the library. And they're they're users just as important as those who walk in the library building. So I'll stop there. Any questions or comments just kind of on the little tiny bit of data? I think you've seen it all about the collection or the key challenges.
Any thoughts? I think we're okay here.
All right.
Just note, five of these nine key challenges are about location. That's just something to keep in mind.
Something to keep in mind. As much as I wish we wrote the mission and vision, we did not, but they are really well done. Core values, those were already in place. So now we immediately get to the heart of the matter. We get to the point. Through our research, data analysis, public input, stakeholder input, our professional experience. We landed on these four areas. And I really want to note that this was a very collaborative process with Michael and his team. So for example, you know, we had sort of landed on these first three, and Michael and the team were like, you know what? I really think we need to focus on literacy, particularly early literacy. As the state of Maryland changes its educational requirements, and there's some evolution there. So.
Just just one second, Debbie, I'm sorry. I have to give credit always where credit is due. And Mary Ann and the team who looked at this were adamant that this be added as an additional. And I was fine with that. I just wanted to make, because we had originally had a lot of things that go in this spread out among the others. But they said, no, this has to be a focus. So I want to thank them for twisting my arm.
Absolutely. And it's worth noting that when we have this collaborative process, when we have a staff that's really thoughtful and invested in the plan, then that means the plan will actually be executed. Again, it's not going to get shoved in a drawer. So I think in this case, you know, really great thoughtful participation by the team. And so the team has already taken a look at this plan when it was in a draft stage. So when Michael goes back. It's possible or likely that the team would say like, yeah, we've seen this already, and we're good with it. So organizational priorities, planning themes, these are our four big goal areas. Number one is digital literacy. So we have a really educated community in St. Mary's County. But we also live in an increasingly digital world, and we still have some gaps. So how can the library step in and be a resource to help people engage with with the digital world, be successful in the digital world? How can the library step in and be that support? We said that's that's a goal area. It's going to empower the community. Number two, embrace innovation. So we've said this a few times throughout the process. Sometimes when we work with libraries, we go in and and we quickly realize like, whoa. We need to sort of start from scratch here. We need to get a strong operational foundation in place. We need to make sure that the collection is good, that programs are good, that staffing is good. That's not the case in St. Mary's County. The library was already humming along as a as a well-oiled machine. And so in this moment in time, when libraries are at a pivot point. St. Mary's County is ideally positioned to embrace innovation. So we said, awesome. We have an opportunity, and strategically, we can say to ourselves, how can we innovate? How can we become that next generation library to serve our next generation community? Number three, community gathering. I cannot tell you how many times in public engagement we heard people say they want to come together. They want to get together in person. They want opportunities. And people don't always know what that would look like. I'm remembering a couple of men specifically in the focus groups who who were pretty honest with us and said, hey, you know, I moved here nine years ago, and I'm still trying to figure out a way to meet people and engage with my community. So people in St. Mary's County are looking to the library to be a place that offers spaces and services and events where people can come together. So that was a message that we heard loud and clear. And then we talked a minute ago about Young Minds. So early literacy, how can we engage little kids? Not just with reading, but with learning. And if you, we looked at the data. So if you look at test scores in the county, there's some work to be done. Certainly, they're better than some other communities that we work with, but there's some work to be done, especially reading test scores. Especially at the elementary level. So if you look at county data, by the time kids get to high school, they're doing a little bit better. We're, I think we're at fifty-second, fifty-fifth percentile in high school, but we're in the thirties in elementary school. So there is an opportunity for the library to step in to its sweet spot, to its bread and butter, and say, we're going to really focus on early literacy. So any thoughts or questions about our four strategic areas?
Think we're good.
All right, we'll keep going. So then we jumped into the action plan, and this is where I heard you all as the board say like, whoa, we're really biting off a lot here. So some of the things that we thought about as we developed this plan is we do try very hard to front load plans because we have noticed that there's a lot of energy and enthusiasm at the beginning. So we'll often kind of front load our plans with the idea that some some things might get pushed. But we really want to ride the wave and ride that momentum when a plan is first launched. We used to formerly, really up until twenty twenty-four, late twenty-three. Often when we worked with libraries, we would say, hey, you know, partnerships are a big deal. We need to make partnerships a strategical area. The library, what we don't want is here's the community, you know, working together. And here's the library way over here, not aligned with community goals and community organizations. So we decided to start, we folded partnerships into every part of the plan. So instead of pulling it out and saying partnerships we need to focus on, we're saying that's part of all of our work every day. St. Mary's County has some of the best partnerships with schools that we have ever seen. Generally, we hear from from library staff that they're not really partnering with schools. They can't catch up with people. No one will return their calls. That's not the case here. That is awesome, and that's something we want to capitalize on. And then, of course, funding. So it came up a few minutes ago, like, hey, we can't afford some of this stuff. You know, we're not going to be able to do that. We we tried to identify some areas where, how can this stuff be funded? And Michael, I'm just seeing in real time, want to make sure, I think these all align, but we'll make sure that they all align in the document. So digital literacy. And I want to check in with the board. It's probably not time efficient for us to walk through every single objective. Do you want us to do that? Or do you want us to kind of broad broader brush with strategy?
I I I think a broad brush approach would be better, unless board members have questions about specific items as we're going through. So maybe we can just take a broad look at each of the four priorities and keep it moving from there.
Okay, so again, I think we really sort of explained why digital literacy is is an important strategical area for this library. The only thing I really want to pull out is two things. AI, how can we help especially people who are less familiar? Not just what is AI, but how can the library get in front, or we're not in front at this point, but how can we help our residents understand what it, what is it, and how can I use it for my work in school? How can I use this tool for myself? Secondly.
May I stop you just one second, Debbie?
You bet.
Let's talk about your low hanging fruit. We are forming a team to evaluate AI, and we've already had one program. And what we found is that it was, hey, we're going to submit basic, here's what AI is, and here's a couple of them. And everybody who attended already knew those things. So the the public is, in St. Mary's at least, is leaping ahead on that. So it is something we will be paying attention to. Thank you.
Absolutely. I just wanted to say real quick, leaning away from, over time, over time, over time from big computer labs, leaning leaning away from big banks of public access computers. What we see is patrons want to grab a laptop and go sit down and do their work in a more private way. So those are just a couple of things that we thought about. So low hanging fruit, you know, we have that in a year from now. So we, that one we could change, and and we're sort of already on the case.
We'll leave it where it is.
Does anybody have any particular questions about the digital digital literacy section? Okay, so let's move on to the embrace innovation area.
Let's do it. I sort of already gave an introduction to that, and so we'll we'll just kind of walk through that. We want to be that true community gathering place, and we want to do that through innovative services. Any thoughts or questions about this area? Make it easy.
Page twelve. Enhance school communication channels. Are we including private schools in that effort?
I'm having a tough time hearing you. Sorry.
Are you use your mic on?
I'm I'm sorry, I have my mic on.
Page twelve, the towards the bottom, and there's one item with schools as a partner. Enhance uses school communication. And my question is, are we including private schools in that effort? And I don't, I don't think it would apply to homeschools, but do we, do we go to the private school community also?
Yes.
Actually, actually, homeschooling is is visits some of the quite common in the libraries, and we do specific outreach to them.
Right, I know I know homeschoolers are very active library users. That's why I'm not. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Judith. Any other questions about this section or comments?
I did have a question. I just opened the statewide futures blueprint, and they were talking about environmental changes. And I wondered if any of the kind of the thoughts about conservation and environmental changes had been incorporated into this section on innovation?
So that's a great point. Sometimes libraries, especially when we work with libraries in Florida coastal states. We often, or California, we will, sustainability will often rise to the level of a strategic goal area. It did not in this case. So the data and the public input did not tell us that it it rises to the level of goal area. However, especially.
Fourteen, if you would. And his sustainability programs, at least two programs include sovereignty and other sustainable lifestyle topics. There are things that are built into the plan and throughout. It's not, as Debbie said, a strategic level. But certainly, the library is concerned about it, and we had at least one person asked to be involved with the strategic planning because that was her primary focus. So I think that we will be paying attention to this.
Thank you.
I hope it's okay to say one editorial comment. People love life skills and healthy living. They love those programs. You will get, and the library is already doing it. So again, low hanging fruit. But people from all walks of life will come together for a cooking program or an organic gardening program. Just our experiences, people love it. So.
All right, thank you. Let's look at the third priority, community gathering. Anybody got any specific comments or questions?
I like the graphic. I didn't notice at first that there were people. Those are actually people gathered around the heart.
And if you notice, also the nautical theme, we have an incredible graphic designer on our staff. She's amazing.
Look towards the bottom of page sixteen, explore grants to foster sustainability of buildings, including solar and other energy saving features. I mean, we are, we are all over this.
Michael, thank you for pointing that out. That's a great point. So innovation, inclusivity. This, we'll just pause on real quick. The library is doing a ton of marketing already, period. The library is doing it. And what we heard, and we hear this in every single community, is people, not everyone knows about the library and all the awesome things it does. We will never achieve a hundred percent market penetration. But, you know, marketing and communication is something that libraries always need to focus on. I think we need to kind of move forward. I want to be respectful of your time. But there is a whole deep level of market segmentation understanding that you get with the library IQ platform. And Michael, as we talked about, it's about all households in the county, not just, not just patrons.
So looking at the final section on Young Minds, any comments or questions?
Cause I had a question about the second item. It wasn't clear from what generify means in terms of the children's fiction collection.
So what generify means is to separate out different literary genres such as mystery, science fiction, historical fiction, other other kinds of different genres that children might like. At Lexington Park, we actually have our picture books in different categories that make it easier for children to browse and to quickly get the things that they are particularly interested in, which really fosters that love of reading.
I thought you guys also used to have stickers on the spine. This is a historical fiction. This is a, I don't know, maybe I saw that somewhere else.
We do, we do in in some limited capacity with a lot of our fiction. Yes.
You used to see that a lot in bookstores. Of course, there aren't many brick and mortar bookstores anymore.
We're kind of moving away from stickers in libraries globally. Just it makes it a little easier for for moving collections around and for sometimes readers will see a sticker and it'll turn them away from a title that they might have been interested in otherwise. We can make this more understandable to laypeople if that is desired. So just let us know. We're glad to to change that word.
Any other comments or questions, or really any questions for Debbie as someone with expertise in libraries? Strategic planning in a very broad sense. And I don't want this to be one of those Zoom calls where the person hangs up and five minutes later, we have a bunch of questions that we wish we had asked.
No, this is more of a, this is more of a cut them down the weeds, but on the, I love the approaching the new parents in the hospital. But I see it's kind of really giving them brochures. Could we find the budget to actually give them a first book?
That's in here too.
It is in here. Cause I I don't. Okay, so when I read this, I don't see that. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing it.
Is it?
Okay, I mean, I would spell that out in here then so that we have support for the budget, and then we can support that effort. It says brochures and guides. And then book, but the book bundles are actually in a library that they would come and check out a book bundle. But I think it'd be great to give them the first book and have St. Mary's County Public Library stamp right in the front. Welcome to our world.
Here's your smart card.
Yeah, we are seeking a grant to do precisely that.
We used to do it.
Grant money.
We used to give a book at the hospital when, you know, a new, you know, somebody came in and had a baby, they got a book.
Right.
But it became too costly. So.
Okay.
And and obviously, there were health considerations with COVID involved. So.
I mean, if you don't get the grant money or something, I would encourage you to come back to the board for that effort and see what we can do. I mean, I don't know how many babies come to St. Mary's Hospital a year. I don't know. Hundred, five hundred, I don't really know.
John, did you have a question?
Yes, to expand my own vocabulary, what is millage?
I believe, I believe that some communities, a certain amount of where there's a special tax that they have to support libraries and other public services.
Yeah, so for example, in Ohio, almost all the libraries have levies, and it's this millage, it's a certain percentage of the tax that is generated. And in libraries that have levies rather than a pass through to the state and the county. That money gets appropriated directly to the library. So no Maryland libraries have a levy. And that is one reason why Ohio libraries often are overrepresented in the library journal slash Gale of five-star libraries, because they've got a lot of money compared to a lot of other libraries.
So approximately one thousand three hundred and forty-two families have babies at here. And that was information we got.
Okay.
That does not include home birth and.
No, it does not.
Be difficult.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sure this data is fascinating for Debbie in particular. Any questions for her before we let her go?
I'd, I'd one about the laptops, but that was really about like a data request and sort of outside the scope of this.
Okay. All right. Well, Debbie, thank you so much. This has been really valuable. Thank you for your insights.
Thank you. It's been a great project. And if, if anything comes up, we're not going anywhere. So thank you and have a great day.
Thanks. You too. Bye bye. Thank you, Debbie. It was great to work with you.
Take care.
Shall I do the last thing, which is the budget review? And then you would take a break. Is that, does that sound okay to folks? Yeah, let's do that. Okay, so this, there's two, two things connected to this budget and one is this one which has by request, the income and the outgoing. And you can either have it numerically or graphically. But we'll go ahead and quickly look at the budget. You see, we've on page one gone in the hole in one item. That's admin and COVID hours. We are following CDC guidelines and we're reducing the days eligible for that from five to three. So we, but we have built a number into next year's budget, just in case. The OPEB account, we budgeted ninety seven and the health expenses for the retirement will exceed that this year. We don't know how much yet, but we'll know at the end of June. And we don't ask you to do a budget reconciliation. Now we'll look at everything after the fiscal year is over. And after the accountants have had a chance to look at things, because there will be things that are expenses from next year that are made next year. I'm sorry, that are made this year. And we won't know about them till next year. So they'll sort of look and see, this was actually, you know, this fiscal year, and that's next fiscal year with us. Other than that, the utilities are generally coming in, although not all of them are spent out yet. We don't have all the bills yet, but they're coming in a little bit under what we had anticipated, which is good news. And we'll be building into that next year's budget. The mobile library, if you look on page three, it looks like we haven't spent a lot, but remember the mobile library has really only been on the road since March. So we are looking at next year's budget and getting a better idea of what those expenses might be.
Excuse me, question?
Yes.
So it hasn't been with us very long. We've already spent thirty six hundred in maintenance. What is that?
There's a lot of initial maintenance when it first comes off of the line. There's all kinds of checks you do to make sure that it's working properly. I don't anticipate going over the amount that we've budgeted for that on a yearly basis. As you go through, you have kind of fewer and fewer checks.
So these were not included in the pre-delivery checklist?
Oh, there was a pre-delivery checklist, but right afterwards, there's like a thirty day maintenance, there's a sixty day maintenance, there's a ninety day maintenance. And then they say, okay, we think you're doing fine, but we do have to pay for those. And then over time it will be fewer, but there'll still be, you know, things we have to do. There's all kinds of fluid levels that happen. So. Have there been any significant problems with the mobile library? There has been one that was fixed for free and that was the steps on the back. And that was fixed by laptops. Working properly. Got it. Thank you. But other than that, mechanically, no, it's been quite solid. So moving on. Really? If you, if you look at our let's look at page five for a second at the top there. You will see that that those look like negatives. That's because we had a balance of FOL money that was, you know, dedicated and we worked this year with both donations and FOL to spend down those accounts. So there's not really negative amounts there. They're just money that was existing from prior years that we are spending down.
But they were on, those dollars were on our books.
We, we had them in the fund balance. And so basically it looks like the fund balance is getting spent down because things that were that were earmarked that are restricted funding that was just sitting in the fund balance, we're spending it down on items that are appropriate and allowed by the friends.
Michael, I'm sorry. Are you referring to page?
Five.
Five. So that's just the summary for the current fiscal year. But if you look at page ten, the top actually shows you our original budget. Anything we collected and what we spent. So you can see that it's actually not a negative for the whole. Those are the restricted funds that are in the fund balance.
Yeah. So there's still some funding there. But it, it looks like, you know, hey, what's going on with this? I just want to let you know that that's the reason why those numbers look negative. Thank you, Belinda. So with ninety two percent of the year gone by, our total restricted and unrestricted expenses are ninety percent. So we're not anticipating a budget shortfall. But remember that we did build a certain amount into the budget where we said we're going to dig into the fund balance. So we won't really know exactly what's happening this year until first the accountants and then the auditors finish everything. But right now we're not anticipating dipping into the fund balance more than we thought we would, but we'll have to see. Belinda, you tell me that there might be twenty seven payrolls this year as opposed to twenty six in this fiscal year.
For twenty six period, period. Turns out that the first rule square twenty five, the way that rules are work. It was that the first payroll is the one that's paid fiscal year. So it's going to be paid in like July, I don't know, fourth, third, fourth or fifth, anyway. But it's actually for the entire town ending in June. So it's from June fourteen, fifteen, six, seventeenth to June thirtieth. No, sorry. It's the last two weeks of June. So through the thirtieth. So that entire payroll, which is actually fiscal twenty five's payroll, the accountants might move back fiscal year twenty four, because it was all worked in fiscal year twenty four. So in that case, our salaries might go over because of that. I'm concerned about that.
What's, what's a typical payroll?
One twenty.
Twenty. Yeah. I mean, that sounds, yeah, the obligation was incurred in twenty four. It should be twenty four funds. We spent, so.
But we budget for this.
But you did budget for.
Budgeted some, but I didn't budget for an entire payroll.
So it would take a reprogramming maybe to.
We'll, we'll take from whatever we can that's left and move it into payroll. Some of it will be from utilities and some from health.
But that's a reprogram. Like you gave us the reprogramming list in early July.
We'll do a budget reconciliation. Once we have the accountants take a look.
And that is why I do believe we'll go into the fund balance this year because mostly because of that. Because a lot of times we don't go into the fund balance, but we will most likely because of that one payroll.
Are you saying go into it more than we have budgeted for?
No.
Okay.
Not, I hope not, but no, generally our fund balance, we sometimes don't go into because we make more in services and fines than we had budgeted for. But this year it won't be enough to cover if they send an entire payroll backwards.
Yeah. So if you look on page six, there's some good news with income and that is that the services and fines were more than we were expecting. So we have, let's sort of look at that for next year, but then you'll see what our use of fund balance was, was we anticipated seventy five thousand, six hundred possibly being used from, you know, from that balance. And with any luck, we will not exceed that amount. And we may have to dip into that amount, but we'll see.
So I'm, I'm trying to go back to payroll. So when your payroll crosses a fiscal year, you're splitting it between the fiscal years. So you, so you had.
Yes.
Right. You are splitting that over two fiscal years.
Yes. And in, in some ways I did budget for it, but I did expect the accountants to send more of last year's final one backwards so that it would cover more of this year's final one too, but they didn't. As much as I thought they were going to.
Payroll is an art sometimes. It's difficult. Yes, I understand.
And I can't also always calculate for things that I don't know are going to happen. So.
Exactly.
Sounded like this was a failure on the part of the auditors.
No, it's not a failure on anybody's part unless you want to blame me, but I did not calculate enough of that. I, I knew that the final payroll of FY twenty three would also be sent backwards into twenty three, which allows that extra funding for the final payroll of FY twenty four be sent backwards. But I thought, I thought they would send more back than and they sent, I talked to the accountants about it. They sent the right amount back. I misjudged. I didn't know how much they would send back. Their calculation wouldn't have been the same as my calculation. That is why. I did a calculation based on the fact that all of the pay was paid on weekdays. And they did just a flat percentage.
Okay. So any questions about the budget? Just that y'all are landing the plane in a very good way as we reach the end of the fiscal year.
The follow up on the, the lag time and getting the utility bills from the county. Are we being kept up to date on how much electricity we're using?
No.
Are we don't have a, we don't have some sort of login or we can, we can check?
No.
That, that's completely handled at the county in some cases, and we are reliant upon them to tell us in a timely fashion. And sometimes that does not.
So it's just Leonard Town and they do, they built, they will only bill me quarterly. I will say the last two quarters have been better. So we'll see how the final quarter goes. So Leonard Town is the one where you see there's like a huge excess and that is because Leonard Town is the one I do not have all the bills for.
So Lexington Park and Shaw Hall are more timely.
Yes. It's only Leonard Town that I have a lag.
Any other questions about this budget? Are we ready for the break?
John, could we break it out?
I don't have that answer myself. I mean, I mean, there's a tool where you can go in and view historical usage like over the day and over the, the week or over the month or over the year.
I, there is, I'm sure the county has it as an account, but I don't have access to their account that would show that. And even if I did, it's for the entire building. So part of it is Garvey. I do know what percentage we pay, so I could look at that, but I don't have access to that account. So the bills, the account access is all the county's, not mine. I have access to Lexi's, I have access to the plug. I have access, I don't have access to halls either, because that belongs to Smurla. But I do, but I do get the bills eventually. Actually, I don't get Leonard Town's bills. They don't send me those, but Smurla does. They send me the hall bill. They show me what it is and the calculation. For Leonard Town, I just get the total due.
All right. Why don't we leave it there and entertain a motion for a five minute break?
So moved.
Second, anybody? Thank you, Tessa. I'm in favor. All right. Okay. Back in five minutes.
All right, everybody, welcome back. I believe we can move on to action items. Michael, if you want to lead the way.
I'll make that motion that we close for December sixth for staff day.
Thank you, Tressa. Thank you, John Walters. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion passes. Are everybody's microphones on?
No, I came in late. We need to do it again, but I.
No, I think we're okay.
Uh, next, you've had presentation on the strategic plan. You have options. You do not have to approve it today if you don't want to, but our work with Library IQ is done. You could approve it as a document saying it's a living document and that changes can be made to it, and that's no problem to do. It's kind of up to you how you wish to proceed with this. My recommendation would just be to say that this is a good plan. It's aspirational. We know we won't do anything. So to accept it as presented, knowing that we can report on it, we can remove items from it, we can add items to it as you see appropriate.
Okay, so I think we can entertain a motion to approve the strategic plan as written. If anyone wishes to so move and then have a conversation from there.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, John Johnston, and thank you, Tressa. Discussion.
I think that kind of implies that's what we're going to do.
So a strategic document typically is laying out big sweeping concepts. The next step is the actionable operational operationalization of it, and that comes with prioritization. If something becomes a priority one, it may not make the operational part of the plan, but the strategy still remains as aspirational. That's what at least how I've seen strategic documents is.
John, what's your concern?
Just when we say we're accepting the plan, what I'm hearing is this is what we're going to do as they've laid it out. I'm I'm more in favor of acknowledging and accepting the document they have sent us without saying that it also represents our endorsement of all this, and that's what we're going to do.
So what do you have next steps in mind?
Well, I think Sharon's already got a pretty good handle on next steps. But again, I think we got to be careful how we say we've got this document.
Yeah.
So we approve it as a deliverable is what you're saying. It has been delivered. We approve the deliverable as written. The contract is completed and and Library IQ owes us nothing. What we end up doing with it is the next question.
That's what I'm trying to. So I my inclination would be that to approve this plan and to empower Michael and his team to begin the prioritization and implementation process, and let's see where we get to. My fear is that today will turn into five months of wrangling over every little objective and this is out, this is in. I do. I don't want us to get stuck in that swamp. My preference would be to approve this plan as the result of a lot of work from a lot of voices and then give it to the team to figure out what are the priorities? How do you implement it? And let's see how it goes. And then we can adjust down the road as we need to.
So I think Michael used the word living document. I I would support approving, accepting the document and accepting it as a living document. Therefore, it's open to edit and changes by the board as necessary, which I don't see very often, but perhaps once you I mean, who knows? One, two years out, what the environment could be totally different. So I don't. I mean, it's a strategic plan, but I don't want to give the impression that we are locked in to this document exactly as written, that that the board is giving itself leeway to change and be reactive if we need to.
I hear that. I also don't want to be careful that undermine the plan itself by kind of hedging a little bit and adjusting on the fly.
What is sometimes done is you have a strategic plan. It's understood that it's aspirational and you provide a tactical plan. And a tactical plan looks at your strategic plan, says these are actionable goals for this fiscal year. So we could devise a tactical plan for you to present in July based on this strategic plan, giving overall guidance, but understanding that there's many things in here, as Mary Anne said during the presentation, that we might not be able to do just because we do not have the staff or the funding. So if you'd like to proceed with this as a document that you've accepted that lays out a strategic direction and that will be supplemented by prioritization and tactical plans, then that might be something to consider.
I I think that's a good idea. Judith, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm looking at the document. Like nowhere in the document does it actually say what we're going to do with this document. It's simply a presentation. There's no action here for the library whatsoever. So I think we need to determine that. What's the action going to be? And at least memorialize that either here in the meeting with a motion or or with a cover on it approved by the board with the intention that the director will continue to pursue the goals as necessary and reporting back to the library periodically. I I kind of think twice a year would be would be sufficient. Again, I don't want to overburden them with constantly reporting to us is my thought. So you said quarterly, I said annually, but maybe biannually, semi semi annually.
I think if it's it's it. My understanding of the way that the tactical plan would work is that it would probably be baked into the director's report. That's at least how I would present it, that I would that you already go through and you say we've done these things. We're at this status. And then you just tie it back and say, as was mentioned in the strategic plan or this part of the strategic plan. That's where I think we're not looking for a minute by minute accounting, but it's fairly easy to take what is strategy and say what we're doing right now aligns to the strategy. Give kind of a framework for reporting.
Right. Yeah, again, I I agree that accepting the document is one thing, but there's no action within this document. So we would have to establish that action, like Sharon said. Formally establish that action. What are we doing with this document?
Okay.
So in a motion, in a motion.
Yeah. So so the motion on the table now is to accept the plan as written. I think a couple of things we may want to add to that motion, perhaps. One would be to ask for a implementation plan for next month, as Michael had described. And then also to ask for updates on the implementation every six months or whatever the case may be, how wherever we want to land on that. So perhaps if we have the amendment with those two other components, maybe that's the way forward.
A one year tactical plan? Is that what we're talking about?
Typically tactical plans are one year.
One year. Yeah.
All right, here's our strategies. Those are set by strategic plan. Here are the tactics we will try to implement based on those strategies for this year. And tactical plans also have to be somewhat flexible in that an opportunity may come along to do something that is in alignment with strategy, but was not imagined at the start of the year. And you can add that sometimes something that you had said we're going to work on this does not become feasible for some reason, but it does basically set out a direction that we're taking for this year, things we want definitely want to try to do this year.
So can we entertain an amendment to the motion to request the creation of a tactical plan for the next fiscal year to be presented to the board next month?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Sharon.
I second it.
All right. Thank you, Judith. Any discussion on the amendment to the motion? All in favor? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstained? So the amendment to the motion passes.
Library administration, I will develop a tactical plan that you will look at and see if you agree with that prioritization. This has to be a team effort. This can't be any one person, but I'll go ahead and start that. And then you will have full say in what we can and can't do because you have a lot better idea than I do about our capacities.
So I want to relabel what they put down for the quote timeline because FY twenty four, twenty five, we've only got two weeks left in the FY twenty four.
No, twenty four, twenty five starts in July.
Wouldn't that be FY twenty five?
Uh, it is, but I I think that they're talking about the years because we haven't had any part of twenty five yet. So twenty four, twenty five, they're talking about next fiscal year. It will be fiscal year twenty five, but it's the fall of twenty four and the spring of twenty five.
Starts July one of twenty four, so it's twenty four into twenty five. So they're doing calendar year, so fiscal year.
Just write it differently.
So so we do need to vote on the underlying motion to accept the plan with the amendment. We just passed the amendment. So any more discussion about where we're at? The amendment on the table is to accept the plan as written, have a tactical plan for next month for the next fiscal year. Okay.
I will make that motion.
It's oh, it's still there. Thank you, Sharon.
Oh, okay.
All right, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion passes. Okay. Great.
Last month, a draft of a director assessment document was brought forward, but it was not accepted as final, and it was thought that changes to it should be made. So I don't know where that process is.
I I don't see it here, but I emailed it out, I think last week.
I didn't see it.
I don't recall receiving it.
I don't think I got it from you.
Okay, my mistake. I'll go back to my emails and I had made those minor revisions to it with.
Let me just say that I don't know why, but sometimes when there are multiple addresses.
Yeah.
My computer treats it as spam and it goes there and I didn't look there. I wasn't expecting.
I should have followed up then, I guess. So my apologies, I guess. Just, yeah.
So I'm going to assume that that will be something for next month then. And one thing that had not been decided that may be a decision that is upon you is there was consideration of moving my assessment to a fiscal year rather than where it existed in November, just as the anniversary of my employment, which is previously what was policy or practice. So I don't know if you want to do that. If so, you would need to decide by what mechanism you'd want to.
Yeah, I don't think that's feasible to do to do an evaluation of you next month. I we have not we have not expressed criteria in the assessment. You have not had that. We have not had that. I think I don't think it would be appropriate to do a an assessment next month to get on a fiscal year cycle.
Darn, between strategic plan and a budget, I was rocking.
I thought we would do one based on the existing criteria because that's what he's been operating under, and it would be much truncated. I thought that's what we were talking about.
A number of those were to be accomplished before December, so.
Yeah.
I mean, granted, there was it's definitely with a large notation on it that this is a interim while we're switching horses. The the other alternative is to wait and do one for eighteen months. But I think it's I feel like it's more valid to at least do a short interim one for the six months and close that out based on existing criteria. That's that to me, that's the only fair thing to do and make it much shorter. I mean, we still have to go through the process, but a much shorter streamlined process, close that out until I first drop reading on the.
What do folks think?
Because otherwise we'd be six months hanging out here.
If if you don't mind simply looking at the goals that were set for the year and dropping those that, for example, one goal was to do a staff assessment in fall, so that would not be something that you'd look at. And you could just say, here's the things that are on this plan that are set on these goals that are appropriate to evaluate for, call it July, then I have no objection to you doing that if that's the way you want to do it.
And I think those things can be easily readily identified, and I'm in favor of synchronizing it to the fiscal year. Get everything on a single timeline.
Okay.
And that means we bite the bullet and do a a shorty right now.
Do we need a motion to decide to do that?
So we would have the tactical plan, the director's assessment and the budget all in sync.
That's nice. Okay.
So if one of you would like to look at what you think of those goals are applicable for I'm going to say the end of June because that would kind of be when you'd be doing it. I I think that will include the budget cycle. That will include the strategic plan. That will include the budget process we're getting ready to do as things. I don't I don't remember that the budget was actually in those. So if you could look at and give me your idea of what you think would be applicable. When you see the form approve the form, you would consider just those in that process and you would complete the assessment in July? Is that what I'm understanding?
Right, after June thirtieth. So and and we should set our goal for ourselves on this new process. I would say by July thirtieth, the board have its part finished, which in a normal year would include your input also, Michael.
Yeah.
And then gets gives you a chance to review it and we go back to finalizing it.
In.
Somewhere by early August.
August, yeah.
Maybe first August meeting.
That that, you know, you'd want to have in upcoming cycles, you want to have the full year to consider. So it would always be done in July, and let's say you'd always set a date by August for it to be completed. I I'm fine with that as a process. I I have no trouble with with that at all.
Okay. All right. So let's do a we'll do a short review for the end of this fiscal year, really honing in on the goals that we previously established that are relevant and applicable to this six month period. Okay, I will. I'll do a little bit of work to pull those goals out and we'll circulate it and we'll go from there.
Judith, there's what you sent out that we don't seem to have gotten. Does that address some of these things?
The same things?
Any of them?
I understand that that would be the evaluation form. This is what you're going to use to do the evaluation. And it could happen anytime. Is that correct?
I'm not I'm not following you.
Um, but this would just be the form you'd use. So it's going to say.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, you this is the area we're evaluating ratings one through five, and then you would all give your ratings and synthesize your ratings.
Right.
Under the old form, because there's many, I don't remember how many there were.
Yeah.
The new form only had five. Your home had probably
Many, many.
Twelve. Right. So it's just the evaluation form we'd see. So I mean, is there overlap? Somewhat. The financial management, communication, those kind of things are.
I think what John is saying is the previous the previous evaluation had goals like the we'll conduct the staff assessment by December.
Right.
We need to make sure that gets transferred into the new one. Those specific goals.
Actually, you're right. We had talked about this, that they were, right.
Yeah, I, I think this is a tough conversation without the draft in front of us. And I think we've, we've kind of tread a lot of this ground before. So I think for now, we have kind of some marching orders to get this six month evaluation done. I just want to make sure that it's as fair as possible and that we're not, you know, introducing a new thing at the last minute, but I think we have a good roadmap to make that happen in the next couple of months.
The, the draft I saw of last time, and I'm assuming um, Judith, that, that it will include it again, did have goals listed at the end, but they would be annual ones. So this will give you the opportunity to look very closely and say, okay, this would apply, that would not apply.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's move on.
Um, it is time to uh, consider next year's fiscal budget. Um, um, Maryland code says that the director of each library shall prepare the annual budget of the library and present it to the board for approval. Um, I actually am presenting two budgets and I will explain why. They are almost identical with the exception of one budget line. So um, I'm going to begin with the one that I'm calling budget one. Um, it is dated six, six at the very top left.
Six, six. I have a six, seven. Oh, you're up there. Okay.
And the other one is dated six, ten. So there are two, and as I say, they're, they're almost identical. So um, this both assume a following for staff, a two percent COLA cost of living or route allowance effective on July one for all staff. And then a one step increase effective on the anniversary of the date of employment. And that's typically how we used to do this. Um, and last year was an exception in that we, we got a large amount that was earmarked for salaries. And we just said, okay, the best thing to do to boost everybody is to do that on, except for the director, of course, July one. Um, but this year we would go back to our previous process. It does save just a little bit of money throughout the year. Um, obviously people who have their anniversary later don't get benefited as much, but um, during the year, but they catch up. So that's what this budget is based upon. Um, in terms of salaries, we have quite a few adjustments because there's more money um, this year from the uh, county, we have an additional two hundred eighty one thousand five hundred dollars that was given to us primarily, at least by implication for salaries. We made a request to them of a little over a million and it had two hundred eighty one thousand five hundred dollars for salaries. And they looked at it and they said, that's what you're getting. So um, nothing for anything else, basically. Um, so we have put that there. They gave us, as we'll see, an additional two hundred eight thousand for AV improvements at the Lexington Park and Charlotte Hall libraries, and that will be built in later. And we have an additional twenty seven thousand dollars and some from the state. Um, so we all, also have raised a little bit the expected amount for services and fines based on what we're getting this year, as we'll see later. So um, we have an additional three hundred sixty two thousand four hundred ninety three dollars built into salaries for the year. Um, we have uh, for, in the health insurance, for the OPEB funding, we have built fifty thousand in, in this budget. That was not there last year. So uh, we have built in ten thousand that wasn't last year for the health clinic admin fees. We think that the county is going to be picking those up. That's for that new clinic that's over here and it's already open for school employees. We think they're going to pick that up, but we're not certain. So we're just using due caution there. So that's those adjustments. Over on the next page, page two, um, we are looking at this year's utility expenses, factoring them to raise slightly, but thinking that we can um, we, we can adjust some downs, specifically Lexi's electric, Lexi's water sewer and trash, Lexi's gas, Lexi's landscaping, the Leon electric, the Leon um, gas. We're thinking that we'll have thirty five thousand four hundred one dollars there less for the upcoming year than we did this year. Am I going through this too slowly?
It's, it's not that it'll be less. It's that I over budgeted.
Yeah. Budgeted.
Budgeted less.
It's budget, it's budget, less is budgeted for next year than is budgeted for this year.
Expenses are the same about.
Yeah, I'm giving it a pluses and minuses here.
Yeah, I, I assume they're going to be about the same. I always build in a little bit of extra, but I didn't build as much extra as I did last year because last year we didn't know there was a price change in the middle of the year last year. So I was guessing.
Question.
Yes.
I open my water bill every day and the fine print, it says new rates coming. They didn't say what the new rates are.
There is always the chance that I have underbid because if they change the rates, I can't guess that. I just can't guess it. But I do build a little extra in, but I don't know what that would be.
Be over there after this. I'll see if I can get a sheet on their thinking.
That's funny. I still won't know exactly because like Leonard Town is billed through the county and it's just a percent. So I can't.
It will depend on, on use as well.
Yeah, it's, it's completely, I guess.
We, we know the budgets have to be fungible. Um, under the operating supplies account, we're taking administration Lexington Park and Leonard Town down five hundred dollars each. But we're raising the staff development allowance to fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty. Um, so um, that's kind of going to be uh, budgeted for um, slightly different, but still very close.
Actually, uh, yeah, staff development is less than this year.
Yeah.
It's twenty thousand this year.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's five thousand three hundred seventy dollars. Try not to get too, too precise on the figures here, but it's, it's five thousand seven, three hundred seventy dollars less budgeted for than it is for this year. So um, on page three, we're looking at the collection accounts. I'm sorry, the circulation um, and digital expenditures. And we are adjusting those down a fair amount.
It's fifty thousand down?
Fifty two, all told. Um, we are deliberately underestimating the friends money that we should receive. They had a very good sale, but I don't get to have a figure what they're going to give us and I'll have another sale here. So our thought is that once we get friends money, that that's where it's going to go in this budget. So we're not planning on dropping those, but we, we will have friends money to put there.
So, Michael.
Yeah.
We have three budgets here and I want to just, what I saw, do a quick, make sure I'm understanding correctly. The difference between the fiscal year twenty five budgets, one is that we're putting more into digital collection and one is that we're funding the OPEB. That's basically the only difference between those two.
These two budgets as presented, yes.
Between the twenty four and the twenty five, I saw that the one where we're putting them, that that money basically um, is the digital collection from twenty four to twenty five, if we put that money into the digital collection is up by forty thousand dollars. And that has to do with the increases in prices in our, in our, our contracts with digital, um, with the digital collection.
Um, the primary difference in the budget is that one funds Hoopla audiobooks and the other does not.
Okay.
Um, so I, I, I would as, would explain that later, but um, if you just wish me to go ahead and do that now, great. So I've talked to, I sent you an email about the increases in our Hoopla budget, especially since January. Um, it's really taken off. Um, now, um, so my initial thought um, with this budget in mind, was that we're just going to have to give up Hoopla audiobooks. Um, we don't have the money for them. Um, and I made the decision to do that and got pushback from staff. So I felt I needed to listen to that and let me explain why. For uh, five years ago now, we made the decision to drop audiobooks on this. It was the right decision. Cars are no longer coming with disc players. Those were very expensive items off on a hundred and twenty five dollars per single set. The discs were constantly wearing out or being lost. And in many cases you couldn't replace them. So losing one disc meant a hundred and twenty dollars was gone. And to the, you know, the, the um, customer losing that, that was a real fiscal burden and many people would simply stop using the library rather than pay. So we went over to digital um, where there is no loss, where also there was a huge increase in availability. Hoopla has two hundred thousand audiobook titles and we had maybe fifteen thousand in, at most in that, you know, digital format. So we offered a lot better customer experience. We thought now many of our older customers were displeased with that. They wanted us to keep the books and until about two years ago, I was hearing that as a complaint. Our staff said, we finally have everybody overusing Hoopla and now you're going to take it away. So we would be the only library that did not offer Hoopla among the three southern Maryland counties.
Can it be scaled back?
Well, no. Um, we looked at different ways of doing that. So what we're finding is that it's not one person doing a lot. It's a lot of people doing one audiobook a month. So you also cannot set the circulation rates differently. You can't say, all right, you can check out one audiobook, but these other formats, so there's music, there's television shows, there's movies, and there's ebooks in Hoopla. They're all used, but not to the extent that the audiobooks are. The audiobooks are what's costing us. So you can't say one audiobook and those others, you still get to do four. So we looked very carefully at this and Sarah ran any number of scenarios. So I simply thought we're going to have to lose it, but we'd be the only one offer, not offering it now. Um, fifteen percent of our customers are unique Hoopla customers. And most of those are audiobook customers. We're looking at angering at least two thousand people who rely heavily upon audiobooks. So I presented two budgets. One funds Hoopla audiobooks for fifty thousand dollars basically. And the other funds the OPEB for fifty thousand dollars basically. And other than that, the budgets are identical. Um, so those are the ones I'm bringing forward to you. Now I can continue to go through and point out other little gains and losses, but they're really the same in both instances. Um, so we are, um, I, one thing that would be significant is that we'd be dipping into the, no matter which of these two you pass, we'd be dipping into the fund balance more than we typically do. We're looking at a hundred thousand dollars possibly coming from the fund balance. The fund balance typically is about four hundred fifty thousand dollars. We can't have it go too low because there's times when we get delayed uh, deposits from the state and the county and it could be as low as a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And dipping too low, I'm concerned we might run into a time when we don't have money. But I think it legitimate to go a hundred thousand down and.
Can I ask, where is that reflected on here?
What's that?
Where is that hundred?
That is on page uh, six. Use of fund balance, one hundred thousand dollars. It's twenty four thousand four hundred more than we balance. So we'd be budgeted for this year.
So, Michael, the only other difference I saw between this year's and last year's was equipment allocation for Lexi and Hall.
Yes, that's.
About that?
That is those um, monies that we were given specifically for one year only for the county to do the AV upgrades.
Okay.
So each one of those is a hundred thousand dollars more than previously because we got that money on a one-time basis. And I'm going to have to talk to the county about how they're going to fund that. Is it all upfront? I hope so because we've got these RFPs coming in. Um, but um, so that's a one-time stipend from the county. We will not have that next year. So next year's budget will probably be less than this year's budget will be.
One other factor involved is that uh, um, to, to explain, all, um, all utilities in Maryland, electric utilities um, required to bill energy and distribution costs separately. And because of rising cost in transformers, um, Smenko's asked the, for the state to uh, for permission to increase distribution rates starting in December. I wouldn't be able to forecast them myself without seeing bills. Uh, uh, but we have some information on our website. But um, so the, the, yeah, the hearings um, for that are not until, um, I think uh, maybe next month. The, the information is on our website. But as far as forecasting individual accounts, I mean, I mean, you'd have to have actual bills for that.
So this budget was extremely tight and um, I can put more money into the electricity part for each of the branches. Um, but again, that would be a guess as to how much um, I will have to take from another line. I'd add to the fund balance.
We, we may have vacancy credit and not spend all the personnel money. I mean, I, I, it's impossible to forecast that kind of growth. I don't think that we need as a budget to build that in when we don't know what it's going to be.
Think that's very unlikely because this budget is extremely tight in personnel. I mean, we, it's, I, I don't think because of.
I don't know we're going to spend it all though. I mean, typically we, we don't. So.
But we're going over this year.
Some money there, but in any case, it's going to be tight everywhere. The only way to add money anywhere, as Belinda just said, will be to dip further into the fund balance.
So I, I feel like um, we, you have a question here about Hoopla. And I'm not sure what the increase has been. If you could just estimate, is it 10% a year? Has it gone up a hundred percent? And if we buy into Hoopla for another year, and, and I do appreciate there's 15% user, that's a, that's a lot of people using it. Um, but at what point will we say it's enough? They've raised it to, it's the breaking point. We're not going to do this anymore. Do you have a point in your mind? And also again, back to the first question, it's like,
Well, we're.
What, how much increase are we talking about here last year?
We're, we're doing two things with that to try to um, mitigate. Uh, one, you saw that um, Smurla is putting more money into the Libby slash overdrive account, which will increase the number of titles that may be there. We don't know how much. The other thing we're doing is for a relatively small amount, adding eight thousand anytime. And that's the advantage that, that um, Hoopla offers is that the titles are always available. People don't have to wait. We do however, pay every time somebody use one. What we're doing is we're adding eight thousand audiobook titles to our talent app that are anytime, but there's subscription and people, we don't pay anytime somebody uses them. They're there. As many people use as most they want. And we want to see how that collection do. I think that um, if Hoopla continues to grow at, call it 20% a year, that this might be the last year we could probably afford it, this upcoming one.
Time out.
Yeah.
So you're talking about growth in terms of pricing.
I'm talking about growth in terms of use, which means growth in terms of pricing for Hoopla.
Is it, is it both?
Yes, because with Hoopla, so let's say I've got my, my um, um, John Visham audiobook.
Right.
I'm a customer. I get that from the library.
Right.
The library pays every time somebody gets something from Hoopla. Now they're always available. So overhear somebody else says, oh, I want that book. They get it. We pay. So there's a growth in, in, uh, increase in use. And as I say, about 15% of our users are dedicated Hoopla users. And we're seeing that grow.
Okay. But are you seeing the price of the John Gresham book go up?
The price of the John Gresham book is not going up, but more people are getting it.
Uh, that's what we were saying is, is Hoopla charging more?
No.
Her book, okay, so they're pretty flat. It's our users, our, so our user base, which is fabulous, is growing, but it's costing us.
Yes.
The, the difference between our two is that Libby, Libby overdrive is, uh, we, we'll pay, we pay a set amount. And you get to, we don't pay for each use because they do have to wait for those books. In Hoopla, we pay by use.
Yes, yes, I, okay, I see that now. And I, and I, your email was very explanatory, Michael. I really appreciate it. And so that's painful. But personally, I have to say that the dollars are what the dollars are. We can only afford what we can afford. And if we have to, in the end, have to apologize or take heat from users, the dollars are what the dollars are. And this is what we're given and we have to live within our budget. And if Hoopla becomes beyond what our budget can support, that's a hard decision that we may have to make at some point.
I would agree.
Yeah. I don't know where we are though, yeah.
Right. And one thing that I'm hearing is that there, I, having worked in some customer service, you can say, we're not offering it today and have a bunch of mad people. Or you can say, this is phasing out. We're offering this alternative. Try this for us and let us know what's going to happen so that you gradually ease people into it. And I think that's what I'm hearing you're saying is that they're increasing the, the Libby overdrive and Palace apps and recommending people go that way because it was a transition to get people off of the discs. So now if we're going to transition people off of Hoopla, we can do kind of the same thing where new people coming in, we direct them that way. People who are, and we can, I mean, you could also make that part of a marketing or, or public sort of, hey, help the library. I don't know if you want to say like, help the library save money that explicitly, but like, this is a better option. We're trying this new thing. Please help us, give us feedback if it works.
Well, the other thing that, um, uh, us, you know, it's going to depend, and this is your decision, not mine. The budget that you approve, if it includes Hoopla, I think next year's budget request to the county, we go to them and just say, this is an increasingly popular service. And I happen to know that some of our commissioners use it. Would you please consider giving us some funding so that we can continue supporting it? So that is an option. And, you know, if then as part of the budget process, they don't, we would have many months to do that transition.
Keep them in communications. Right.
Yeah, let them know, let them know well ahead of time.
Also, I would like to say, Sarah just timed in that Hoopla is up 18% this past year. The cost of Hoopla is up 18%.
Due to usage.
Right.
So our success is killing us.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's popular, but we're having a hard time funding it.
So I
And on the flip side, if we were to push a campaign that directed people to the other things, we might come in under budget for use if we got enough people to transition in the next year to using other things.
I will say that there are no services that compare to Hoopla in content. Um, that, I mean, we are looking at alternatives, but I mean, what you can get on Hoopla is
A lot deeper collection.
To
Yeah.
The, the cost per use is higher than our other digital services. Um, but in order to afford what is on Hoopla, we'd have to have millions to, to match that as a collection.
Fair.
Yeah.
Are there titles that are on both apps? That we can recommend this one first?
There are, there is considerable overlap between Libby and Hoopla. The primary difference is that Hoopla doesn't offer necessarily the newest titles. Um, often there's a delay on those coming out over Hoopla. So in many cases they're older, whereas with Libby, we get the most current stuff, but you've got to wait for it.
Right.
So there is, unfortunately, there's no perfect al- alternative here. Um, short of having a huge, huge, huge budget where you just said, we're not going to bother with Hoopla. We're going to put it in Libby. Then the cost per use would go down and everybody would have it for, but we don't have that kind of money.
Right, right, right.
Before I join the board.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm just saying, I think educating the public about trying other things first before going to Hoopla could be a way to reduce the cost and come in under budget.
But John, do you want to?
We could
Yeah, before I joined the board, I remember on Hoopla that, um, I think it started out with, with the six titles per month and it went down to five.
Yes.
That was a budget decision, yes. And we, we, uh, unfortunately taking it down still more because of the use patterns on Hoopla is not going to lower the use substantially. Because as I say, it's not like a lot of people are saying, I'm getting five per month. It's a whole lot of people getting one.
Mm-hmm.
So
Well, and that actually shows that the marketing is working in some ways because we do push Libby and Palace much harder. All of our staff do. We understand the financial implications of Hoopla. The biggest thing Hoopla sells is that there's no wait. So sometimes you get on Libby, if any of you have used Libby before, the waits can be insane. And I mean, we're talking six months. It's long. And so then people will check Hoopla. I know that's how I use Hoopla myself is I will check first. And then if I, if I don't want to wait that long, then I'll go to and I know of a lot of people in the community who do use Hoopla that way. And so that's why we see this pattern of they're only checking out one or two a month. So bringing down that limit isn't necessarily going to save us a lot of money, but more and more people are hearing about it and it is an excellent service. If you, if you choose Hoopla, it's extremely easy to use. It's awesome that there's no waits. So it's very attractive. Um, so exactly what you just said, our, our success is killing us. It is very expensive.
Sounds like Amazon. You can get everything instantly.
Instant, right?
Yeah. Movies, music.
That, that is, yeah, it's the closest libraries have competing to a streaming service.
So the, the question before us now, then we have two budgets. We have the Hoopla budget, we have the OPEB budget. And we need to approve a budget. Is there a universe where we can do the Hoopla budget and take a scoop out of the fund balance for OPEB?
Yes, there is, but we'd have to dip into the fund balance more. And if that is your decision to say a hundred twenty, twenty thousand into, we will need fifty for Hoopla. Combined with the twenty-seven thousand, five hundred that Smurla is offering the three counties, ours. Um, that will fund Hoopla. If you want to dip into the fund balance, sort of to know a hundred and twenty, I think we can still sustain that and not be lower than I'd really like us our fund balance to be. And put twenty thousand into, um, the OPEB. That is something that we can do. I don't want to put a full fifty and I think that that's going to make that fund balance be low enough that I'll be nervous if we don't get timely payments.
I think it's more important that we continue to offer this service that is obviously growing. And it's a wonderful service and there's nothing else like it. Um, I think that is more important, takes precedent than putting fifty thousand dollars into OPEB, which we're not required to do. But we would lose a lot of library customers and probably even more because as it grows, people are going to be using it.
Yeah, I agree. And I'm, I'm definitely agree with Sharon too. We should continue to push, um, Libby and Palace, um, typically using all three, you know, I, I check, um, if I'm looking for a specific title to see which one has it.
Members of the public, if you are watching, there are titles that are only on Palace that are often frequently available. Get in, get early.
Yeah.
I'm using, I'm using Palace solely now and have been very pleased with the holdings there. Sarah has picked out some unique titles for us. Um, especially if you happen to be a sci-fi, um, reader, the Anthony Weir titles, one of them is The Martian, but there's several others there.
Great, yeah.
I'm not a big sci-fi fan, at least they got me enthralled, so.
John, what do you want to say?
But looking over the horizon, which I think is Judith's point. So we've got pricing increase coupled with usage increase. It's a very popular system. But there's going to come a point where we're going to look at the budget and say, we just can't do it anymore. If that's, if we, if we recognize that reality, I would be in favor of taking a, a combined approach. And if, if we make some people mad now, I'm sorry about that. But do we want to make a lot more mad later when we realize that this thing is killing us price-wise?
So what are you, are you suggesting lowering the cap from five to a lower number?
I think it could be a combination of things.
But we've said that's not really going to save us any money.
Right. So
Well, wouldn't it offset to some extent the fact that more people are wanting to be users?
No, no. Not based on the statistics we've looked at. So because so many users are only using one or two checkouts a month, it's the number of users. So the num, the actual base number of users is growing and it's growing substantially. And so just lowering the number, we really did not feel that that would make much of an impact at all. I don't remember the numbers, but Sarah did run all of the different scenarios.
Many different scenarios that we've looked at.
For Hoopla was not going to make a substantial difference.
I, I will say that digital is a, a growth area for libraries and print circulation is not. And that currently it is the growth in digital that is keeping our circulation numbers equal to what they have previously been. So we're, we're going to have to look at shifting money ultimately from a print collection into digital or trying to increase the pot, one or the other, but
Well, how about that as a possibility of a solution now?
We've, we've already lowered the materials budget in both these budgets. So, um, I don't think that's a solution now.
I, I don't, yeah, I think if, um, we can swing it this year with a couple of different options. But I think going forward, um, the director had a good point about selling this to the commissioners and getting a buy-in that we're going to, that we are going to bookmark this item, that we, we want to keep Hoopla for the citizens of this county. And it's going to cost us this much every year, like getting a pay raise that they've got to commit to. We're keeping Hoopla. Do you gentlemen, ladies, agree with us?
Gentlemen.
That's, I'm hoping so. In the future, in the future.
Good things in the past.
Um, that they would commit and that would take an effort, you know, like, like we did with, uh, with the, um, pay raises, the really, really necessary pay raises. This is a service, this is, this is, I see, this is where libraries are going. This is where the world is going, is to digital. It's never going to get less. We either commit to the growth and that's their commitment in funding, supporting us, or we don't commit to it because we can't afford it anymore.
Well
Um, but I think it would, I think it's worth an effort to bring it to them starting December, January, when this process starts, like fund for this year. And there's, there's a couple of ways we could do that. And then see what kind of reaction we get from them. Are they going to commit to the digital library concept for the citizens of this county, which who want it and are demanding it? Or do we want to be the only county in Southern Maryland that doesn't offer this? Um, yeah, and it's going to bring, and I say, you know, we give everybody the commissioner's emails and phone numbers, not ours. Um, so, so now as far as funding, um, I think, uh, John Walters and John Johnson and I, and Tessa, you went to the, the nonprofit institute training up in Charlotte Hall a few months ago. Um, and we got, we had some really good discussions at the end about financial management. And, um, the strong recommendation, and most of the county follows this, is that you do not carry over unassigned funds more than one or two percent of your budget. Um, because, and, and we are speaking publicly now.
That's not true of fellow counties, they do have more than that.
Well, it can't
Not fellow counties, the, the county agencies, like, like the Board of Education, which has by far the largest. And, um, Ms. McCourt says she keeps it down to one or two percent of their budget because if you don't, you're setting us up for a money grab. And it does look like we have a significant amount of money on our books for years that is not being used.
We, we
And it is our obligation to use taxpayer money for the intent that it was used for. So with the four hundred and seventy thousand, give or take, unassigned fund balance. Um, I mean, that would bring us down to carrying over regularly about a hundred thousand dollars.
Judith, how do they handle the fluke? Because so much of our budget is payroll versus other organizations. The problem, I understood that the fund balance was because sometimes we don't get the payroll in a timely fashion. So we're not overdrawing.
I think the first, I think that early payroll can be an issue getting the funds. So we'd have to see what's a comfortable level. And the payroll once runs a hundred and twenty. Then I can certainly see that keeping a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty.
It's
My recommendation is that
I thought it was three hundred sixteen per month.
It's, it's
Yes.
That's total expenses.
Could be
For all of the salaries.
For everything next year.
Well, so payroll is the big thing that is going to be problematic.
You have to pay it.
Right.
And you have to pay it every week.
On time.
So, so to address the fund balance, um, I think we should come up with a plan, how to bring down this fund balance to, uh, a reasonable level, a sustainable level. And it's an exercise that has to be done maybe over two or three years, maybe not necessarily every year. But as it builds up, unlike, and school board will tell you this, it builds up over the years and then you've got to start paying attention to it, that you're not carrying over an unreasonable amount. And, um, we could fund Hoopla out of the budget and come up with a spend plan for the unassigned fund balance of say, three hundred thousand dollars. That would leave a hundred and seventy. And that would include OPEB deposits.
Belinda, for next month, how hard would it be to do a graph of the fund balance over time to see how much it's changing? I think we've seen that before. But we're wanting to see essentially if it's growing.
You, you want the fund balance, right? Just the fund balance.
Probably
What's left?
Yes.
In the funds.
Right. So probably I would say two-week increments or monthly increments?
It's, two weeks aren't going to be anything.
Monthly would be easy because it's, you'll get the best.
Monthly, I could do monthly, I think. Over how long of a time period?
Probably two years. Cause then you'll be able to see if it's actually growing or if it's fairly, if it's fairly stable.
Every year too.
Right. It's just graphs are really nice for that because you can see where it's growing and then, right?
The audit is often, uh, an annual thing though. I think monthly would be more helpful for it.
Also, the audit, the audit numbers also include your bank, your Vanguard accounts.
They include friends' money. They include, or I'm sorry, they include all these things that are not really officially us. So I don't know that you can say that the audit is going to give you an accurate number.
Right.
So I think, so let's look at this data that, that Belinda's going to compile. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
And we can sort of see over time, how is the fund balance changing? In the meantime, our time is running short and we need to make a decision here. Um, we have the Hoopla budget, we have the OPEB budget. Michael indicated that taking, I think, twenty out of
An additional, call it additional twenty out of fund balance, I think will not jeopardize that until we can have a better idea of it. I would like to point out on page five of either draft that our monthly expenses are four hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars. And I think you should have that much money in the fund balance. And it's right about that right now. One month worth of expenses, actually two months are generally what is recommended for government agencies. So I think that you should have that, but I think you can still take twenty and have that. An additional twenty and have that.
Also, I want to remind you that, that fund balance does some, the, the MLGIP account includes those restricted funds that we have been spending down because the goal, the previous history of the library was just to let those roll each year. And our goal is to get those down. So we're only spending in the fiscal year that which we've gained in the fiscal year. So we did spend a huge amount of those restricted funds this year. And we'll finish that up next year. So maybe by the following fiscal year, we'll start each fiscal year with zero restricted funds. And then we'll get only donations in FOL within that year.
Right. So at, at this point, I think we can entertain a motion if anyone wishes to so move to approve the Hoopla budget and to approve taking twenty K out of the unfunded balance to go into OPEB.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, John. Thank you, Tressa. Discussion.
I would like to hold on the twenty thousand dollars until we see what the, how the balance of the fund balance has changed over time.
I can find another ten.
Um, so let's see. So then Sharon, are you suggesting an amendment to the motion to get rid of the OPEB piece?
Just approve the OPEB budget at this time.
I'm sorry, the Hoopla budget.
Oh, sorry, the Hoopla budget at this time.
Does anybody want a second?
I'd agree with that. That's a good idea.
Okay, um, all in favor of the amendment to not worry about the Hoop, the OPEB funding right now? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Okay, two abstentions, the motion passes.
So, um, I assume then that once you have more figures, you could approve an amended budget. That's certainly possible, uh, in the future. Um, and, uh, look carefully at what those amounts are in the future. Uh, thank you for this because we do have to have a budget.
We just passed the amendment. We have not done the motion yet.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um, okay, so then I think, so then the motion on the table is to approve the Hoopla budget. And I guess then we're looking at revisiting this next month when we have more data about the unfunded balance to kick in money for OPEB possibly at that point. Okay. That's where we're at. So the motion on the table is to approve the hoopla budget. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Okay, motion passes.
Well, thank you very much for that. I see that it it is noon. Um, so very quickly, um, new trustee business, any, Michael?
Uh, let's see. Do we have any new trustee business?
I have a question. Um, do we have an engagement letter from the auditors yet or a schedule?
Uh, we have engaged the auditor, yes, and uh, the state has approved our use of that auditor. And we have already started the process.
Because I think we were going to share with the board um, the schedule so that we could meet perhaps by Zoom with our questions and concerns about last year's audit before they get started, so we can have that discussion.
We've already started. You got it.
It's. All right, then, sooner the better.
If you want to formulate your questions.
I mean, this is a discussion we had before. Right, Mike, about meeting with auditors?
I believe so.
Took over.
I I.
Points John had up.
My recollection is that you had never definitively decided you were going to do that as a board. I I asked for those questions to be written down and that I would send them to the auditor. I certainly agreed to that, but I don't know that you ever agreed as a board, you would meet with the auditors.
Did we send them questions?
My concerns?
Um, if that's something that the board wishes to be sent to the auditors, I will do that.
Yeah, I don't see the harm in that.
I I I, if you would send them again.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else want to be refreshed on them?
You copy me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But could we have the schedule from the auditors? Um, because we had time conflicts last year with enough time to review the draft audit.
We have asked them to have their audit done in a fashion that will allow you considerable time before it has to be finally approved in November. So they should have it done in September. And you should have at least three weeks before you look at the October meeting where you would have to approve it.
Yeah, but haven't they given you a written schedule?
I.
For entries, fieldwork, draft?
When we discussed uh, we talked to them about your schedule and your choices. Um, and we just discussed with them that we wanted to make sure that there was enough time this time for you to review it. Um, they they work, they work off of the county's schedule. Um, we don't see, uh, I don't know that they wrote it down for us. They just give us a basic outline of what we're following. Um, so some of it will depend on, they are asking for some things through September, so sometimes that's part of the delay, but we, I will be, I have already been starting the audit and giving them information and um, starting July 1, I will be doing that every other day, probably um, updating more audit information for them. Um, so it just depends on how, what they're asking for. So some of the times it's like through the end of June, sometimes it's through the end of July, sometimes it's through the end of August. They they ask for information before and after the fiscal year. And so they have to get all of those in place. And I can't give them information that hasn't occurred yet.
And remember that you do not have to, although there's a deadline, you do not have to approve by November 1. If you don't, then I get a letter from the state saying, why haven't we seen your budget, your your audit yet? But it's not like they penalize us or do anything. You will have as much time as you want to review and approve the audit. And we will make sure of that.
Yeah, Michael, did I, did I hear you earlier say that the audit includes looking at the friends and?
It it looks at, it it looks like things that at the rent, uh, so that's, that gets factored in. And it looks at things like money we never see. For example, our employees get money from the state into their retirement. We never see that money. And it includes that. So it looks like there's a lot more money around than there really is when you look at every aspect of the audit.
But no, John, it does not include the friends money or the FOL money. It includes the donations they give to us, but not their money.
Well, it doesn't include the money they have on their hands, but any friends money we have, it includes that too, which doesn't necessarily look like it's restricted the way it is.
Okay, so if it's transferred onto our side.
Yeah, it includes all that money, yes. And we're trying to spend all that down, so we don't have any, but the friends should be giving us a check in July. So already, you know, those restricted funds will be larger.
Michael, do you want to walk through the dates coming up?
Yes, if there's no other business, um, Juneteenth, next Wednesday, the library is closed. The library, mobile library, and another outreach team will be at the Juneteenth celebrations this Saturday. Come on out and see us. The start of the fiscal year is July 1.
Right.
This evening is Flag Day. Uh, I will be there. Um, if anybody wants to come out to Flag Day, it's a nice, nice event. Um, June 27 through 29, I will be going to the American Library Association. I host something called eBook Friday. It's a four hour session with shakers and movers in the library digital world. If you would like to see that, I can provide you a Zoom.
Thank you, Michael. I would note too, I will be away traveling for the July meeting and the August meeting, so I will not be around the next two months, but I'll email John for my proxy vote. Um, all right, can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
So the motion to adjourn the meeting?
Thank you, Dorothy.
A second.
Thank you, Sharon. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Okay.
Thank you, everybody, for your service to the library.